Evening and welcome to the July twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-four City Council Roundtable Meeting. I am Mayor Ross and tonight's meeting is brought to you live using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. And tonight's recording will be posted on the city's YouTube channel. So, welcome and thank you for joining us. City Clerk Dean, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Benson.
Here.
Councilmember Watten.
Here.
Councilmember Holloway.
Here.
Councilmember Washington. Councilmember Cotton.
Here.
Councilmember Christensen.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
And Mayor Ross.
I am here. And Councilmember Washington has requested to be excused from tonight's roundtable and council. Is there a motion to excuse Councilmember Washington?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Johnson and second by Councilmember Christensen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? And Councilmember Washington is absent is approved. Um, we now move to our first item of business, which is to approve the agenda. And this is just regarding the roundtable only, which is the reclaimed water reservoir improvement project update. Um, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
So.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, second by Councilmember Christensen. Is there any discussion? See none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? And the agenda is approved and I will invite Andrew Vining up to provide an update on the reclaimed water reservoir improvements project update.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Uh, Andrew Vining, project engineer for Public Works. So this agenda bill was prepared as a follow-up to previous agenda bills in discussion. So the city produces and distributes reclaimed water during the summer months to preserve potable water resources for drinking water purposes. Reclaimed water offsets potable water usage annually by approximately fifteen percent of the peak demand. So the proposed reclaimed water reservoir improvements include a new four hundred thousand gallon reservoir and pump station to be located along Ridge Street adjacent to the BPA power line near the golf course. In the previous discussion, there were some questions surrounding the necessity of this project. In a nutshell, these improvements are necessary to bring an outdated distribution system up to current standards and ensure safe and reliable delivery of reclaimed water and conservation of potable water. So the longer version is, uh, provided in the legislative history of the agenda bill, which I'm going to summarize here and, um, please ask questions at the end. Uh, so reclaimed water production for beneficial reuse in Washington State was first codified in nineteen ninety-two under RCW ninety forty-six. Shortly after, in nineteen ninety-seven, the city's reclaimed water system was constructed as it is operated today. At the time, the reclaimed water standards focused on regulation, control of reclaimed water at its point of production, which for City of Snoqualmie includes the WRF where it is cleaned with sand filtration and UV disinfection. Water is sampled at the WRF daily and if for some reason the water does not meet specifications, it is not delivered up the hill to Eagle Lake for distribution. In two thousand and six, state legislation updated RCW ninety forty-six to improve the safety and reliability of reclaimed water in response to population growth and global warming. This RCW directed state agencies, including ecology and Department of Health to develop greater framework to encourage the use of reclaimed water and began a twelve-year effort with stakeholders preparing the reclaimed water rule, which was published in two thousand and eighteen under WAC one seven three two one nine. The two thousand and eighteen reclaimed water rule includes requirements for storage and distribution of reclaimed water to ensure that the Class A water is not degraded following production. The city's distribution system does not meet these storage and delivery requirements and at times city staff have observed degraded water quality of the water produced uh, as a result of it being stored in Eagle Lake. The proposed reservoir improvements will isolate the distribution system from outside sources, including Eagle Lake and provide the city operations staff with total control of Class A water produced. Following coordination with state agencies, including preparation of a reclaimed water engineering report, which is included in the exhibits, uh, city staff and consultants determine that this reservoir improvements are the most cost-effective, readily available alternative that will ensure safe and reliable delivery of reclaimed water and continued preservation of potable water resources. With that, I will pass it to City Administrator Mike Chambly for additional follow-up.
So there were some concerns, um, of the water quality, uh, making staff sick. Um, that was brought to my attention. Um, so I approached that several different ways. Um, first thing I did was um, meet with my staff to pull all the accident reports that had been turned in over the last couple of years, and there were zero for exposure to, uh, any water. The next thing I did was I pulled the sick leave usage of all three divisions in the water department. The clean water, uh, division, the dirty water division, and the recycle water division. And I checked to see if there was a peak in any one of those divisions. They all do similar work. They're all working with water. They're all in the same geographical location doing the same type of work. And it was straight across the board, same number of days. Um, so there was no peak in, in any one division. So that was telling me that there wasn't a division that was getting more sick with the water that they were, were working with than, than the other. Um, and then, uh, I also pulled all the records for the water that we were producing to confirm that they were meeting state, uh, requirements and they were zeros across the board. The water that the plant is producing meets the conditions of our permit prior to leaving the facility. Um, the final step I did was I asked the sewer department to actually go sample, uh, Eagle Lake. Um, and it, they come back positive for the coliforms. Um, we didn't take it past that with the testing to identify, you know, which species or anything like that. They just were present. Um, Eagle Lake is a stormwater, uh, retention pond. It's a recycled water reservoir and it also is surrounded by golf course. So there's a lot of stuff flowing in there that's mixing with our clean water and, and making it not clean anymore. So, um, I also confirmed with the public works director that staff had PPE. Even followed up with the different diversion, uh, division, uh, managers. They have PPE, they are using PPE, and then I reinforced with the, um, Parks and Public Works Director that should a member of staff ask for different PPE to order it because that's the PPE they're going to use. Um, providing them with PPE that they don't think fit or don't, don't, doesn't work for them. That's useless PPE because they're never going to use it. So, um, we believe that, that the framework's in place. And then in final, the last thing I did was to reiterate with the public works director and the managers that if anybody gets injured on the job, they do have to turn in accident reports and reminded them where they were, confirm they have examples available and let them know that we were available if they had any questions.
Councilmember Benson?
Um, thank you for, for that report. Um, there, there was a lot of confusion around this. Um, one of the, uh, things that I was, I was confused about was that when we were talking about it, it sounded like this is a system with no problems. We'd never had a recorded incident of any kind. And we were being forced to jump through this hoop for no reason. Uh, and one of the phrases used about this project was that we had fought tooth and nail against it. Could, um, could, I believe it was Mr. Hamlin who used that phrase. And I just, if you could just, uh, explain to us what was the, uh, the part of this project that you were fighting against? When you, uh, when you use that phrase?
So, this came about back with the old administration. Uh, the previous mayor had been through the rounds with ecology previously when we developed the system and had an understanding, thought there was a clear understanding about how we were to operate the system and the requirements that were in place and that he felt that ecology had kind of backed us into the system that we have. And that now they were changing the rules on us and forcing us to, to change that. So he had us look at the rules and, you know, we said.
And the, the rules that they were, they were trying, were they trying to get us to to chlorinate the water at that point?
Well, the reclaimed water rule has various ways of, generally, yes. That's, that was their first, their first, I'd say kind of a mandate to say, you guys, since you're pulling it out of the pond, you need to chlorinate that water. And we said, well, that's not feasible because we looked at it, of course. Uh, it doesn't operate like a water system. So it's, it's not like fully charged all the time. So you can't keep a chlorine residual in it. It discharges every night, you know, when the pump shut off. So it drains out, water sits in there. In order for us to keep a residual in that water, we would have to basically flush lines every night. And then we'd have to put so much chlorine in it to get a residual at the very end that we would probably likely kill all the vegetation in close because the chlorine levels would be so high. So it's not really a feasible option for us. So we were forced to either.
So that was, that was the aspect of the project that you were, that you were fighting tooth and nail against was chlorinating the whole system?
Yeah, we were trying to avoid doing the chlorination. And then there was, you know, why are you imposing this rule on us? You know, this, and is ecology's, what's the next rule that's coming down the line, right? There was that argument. And, uh, when it comes to the rules, it's like, it's difficult for us to fight against the rules because we don't make the rules. Uh, we don't do epidemiological studies. We don't do health studies. We don't create the data, right? So we argued that by saying, look, we have no recorded incidents of people getting sick from the reclaimed water, right? Uh, but they don't, they didn't even consider that. I mean, they just, just rejected that straight away.
So then the.
Councilmember Benson, please seek recognition before speaking.
So then the, the, the reservoir was actually proposed by whom? Was that proposed, proposed by the state or proposed by us?
It was a kind of a, a, a fair bit of looking around at what our options are with our consultants. And so, you know, we were trying to find other options that were available to us. One would of course would be to convert to potable water, right? And then there goes eleven to fifteen million gallons of drink, drinking water every year, which we would have to come up with by some other means if we were to continue to stay ahead of our growth curve and all of that. That water is very expensive. To get new water resources, it's just, you can't go buy it. There's, it's not there. So we would have to get creative. And so we looked at that and we looked at potentially redoing our entire irrigation system to do reclaim, to keep it charged all the time and keep the chlorine residual. And we looked at those costs and they were crazy. And so, and not even really very feasible. So then, you know, the, the, the idea about segregating just our portion of the water in a reservoir, that was the other option. And that was by far the, the most attractive option because it was the least expensive and allowed us to re- reserve our existing drinking water resource.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions for either project engineer or Director of Public Works? Councilperson Johnson?
Yeah, I just wanted to get a little bit better understanding of, um, the, uh, funding for this. Uh, we obviously have, what it says here is uh, six point eight six six million in state funding for the project. I want to hear a little bit more about that. Um, and then where the rest is intended to come from. So it's kind of like a two-parter, I guess. Um, so for the, uh, state funding, it says that's going to be a low interest loan. Just curious, how low is low interest? Talking like point one percent or we're talking five percent? It all depends on, uh, who you ask as to what a low percentage is. And then, uh, where the rest is intended to come from for the nine million.
Absolutely. Uh, so at our last discussion, we had met a dr- we were on a draft offer list from what we call, you can look it up. It's the state, uh, Combined Water Quality Funding Program. Uh, ecology runs it and, uh, annually they offer funding for stormwater, drinking water, wastewater-related projects. And, uh, we applied for six point eight six six million, which was the budget at the time, and we were offered the full amount. Um, just two weeks ago, we met the final offer list. So, um, the next steps would be negotiating an agreement. During the, since our application time, we've actually added in some scope. So the, we did an evaluation on the implant pump station that's located near Eagle Lake. And, uh, did a cost analysis of rebuilding the pump station versus extending out a additional pipe. Ultimately, it's most cost effective to rebuild that pump station. So that's what's in this full, uh, project scope currently. So, uh, we've, we will be preparing, uh, a memo to ecology requesting additional funding, um, beyond that six point eight six six for that additional scope. There's no guarantee we'll get it. There are some limitations, um, in the funding category we're in. There's a ceiling of seven million, but there are conditions where we may be able to go above that. Um, yeah. Interest rate, yes. Uh, interest rate is, uh, we've been offered a point six percent five-year loan. However, there is another category I think which is much more appealing, discussing with finance is a one point two percent twenty-year loan. Uh, and, um, that's what we'll be requesting when we get into negotiations with ecology for that. Uh, there are requirements along with the state funding, um, that we are, you know, environmental, cultural resources, public outreach. Uh, one of those will, one of the requirements is to bring a, uh, ordinance to city council prior to the agreement, um, approving the funding. And that would be occurring this fall.
Any other questions? Right. Thank you.
You think you counsel.
And that was the only order of business for our roundtable. So is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second. By, see, Councilwoman and second by Councilperson Christensen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? So we are adjourned at six forty-six and we reconvene at seven PM. All right. Good evening. This brings us to our regular meeting of the city council at seven PM. We just completed a roundtable. And, um, let the record show that Councilmember, um, Washington is absent. And the rest of the council is here this evening. So council, please join me and stand for the pledge of allegiance. And Councilmember Benson, would you please lead the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So our first item is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, second by Councilperson Christensen. Is there any discussion? See none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? And the agenda is approved. So we have several special things going on this evening. The first one is the badge pinning for firefighter Tyler Bird. So Chief Bailey, would you please introduce our new firefighter?
Evening, Council. Uh, honored to be in front of you again today to introduce, uh, a new firefighter. Tyler, come on over here. You gotta stand with me. He actually started with the city on June sixteenth, but just due to schedules and his family not being available, we had to, he wasn't able to be here on the night that we did Deputy Chief Brown. So he, uh, he's special enough. He gets his own night. So just to tell you a little bit about, uh, Tyler. He was born and raised in Kirkland. Uh, he's the middle of three sons. Uh, he's active in sports and community from a young age and he initially decided to pursue a career in automotive collision repair and customer service right out of high school. However, his true passion lay in the fire and emergency services, a path he discovered with unwavering support of his family. In two thousand and seventeen, he joined the Getchell recruit program with Snohomish County District Twenty-two, marking the beginning of his dedicated service as a firefighter. Since then, he has not only responded to numerous strike teams to fight wildland fires, but has also played a crucial role in training and mentoring new firefighters. We've actually had several firefighters come through from the Getchell program. It's a great program. And, uh, it's really great to have Tyler with us because he's stepped in and done a great job, uh, in the month and a half he's been here. Uh, so today, uh, he brought with him, he shares his proud moment with his close family, his wife Brianna and their daughter Olivia. His two brothers, Lee and Jacob, and his supportive parents, Julie and Scott. He's honored to be joining the City of Snoqualmie Fire Department where he looks forward to contributing to community safety and emergency response in a timely, professional manner. Like I said, he's been with us for, oh, you know, a little over a month right now. Done a great job fitting in with the crews. He just actually started working shift, um, just a couple of days ago. And so he's now working a twenty-four hour or forty-eight hour shift alongside the other firefighters. So really lucky to have him. So tonight, like we've done before, Mayor, if you could present him with his helmet. And then we're going to have his wife, uh, Brianna come up and pin on his badge. It's all you now.
The word. Can you hear me? Okay. So we're very, congratulations, very happy to have you firefighter bird, um, and welcome to our department. So nice to have you. Would like to say a couple of words.
Sure. I think Chief covered a lot of it. Uh, but first off, I just want to thank my family. You guys have been with me through a lot. Um, so thank you for being back in me. And, uh, again, just thank you to the City of Snoqualmie for giving me the opportunity. Thank you.
Couple pictures here. We'll get some pictures of us and then. Family, did you want to come up?
Don't be bashful.
Right. Next is a ceremonial oath of police officers Kobe Hoila and William Notka. So both officers have taken the oath of office prior to this evening and tonight we will provide an opportunity for them to read the oath, sign it, and then there will be an opportunity for photos. So first of all, Chief Lynch, would you please introduce them?
I will. Um, it's my pleasure to stand up here and, uh, but when I'm standing up here, you guys stand up, remember? There you go. I first met these young men probably coming up on a year ago when they put their application in with the city. And, um, it was at a time where we were doing a lot of, um, oral boards, what we call it, when they come in and we put them through a questionnaire about forty-five minutes to an hour of grueling questions. And then once they make it through that, then they go to a chief's interview, one-on-one with me, followed by a background investigation, a polygraph exam, a psych test, a medical exam, all of that takes quite a long time. Um, we were able to, to hire these two young men, which I'm thrilled to have them here. They, if, if you guys just got a little bit of chance to, to come hang with them at the police station, I would, I would really highly suggest doing that. These guys are, um, they're squared away young men. I don't know how they did it, but I believe after meeting both of their families, they're, they're the reasons why they are the way they are. Um, so little quick story, when they graduated on the eleventh of this month from the academy, they had been gone for almost six months and, um, we always tell them to invite family and friends, come up and, and somebody will pin your badge. Well, um, Officer Hoila had a really good turnout, about ten, eleven, twelve friends and family. And I'm like, wow, this is really cool. We don't usually get that much. And then Officer Notka's family showed up for the family picture. And there were probably somewhere between sixty and seventy-five Notkas in the crowd. And it quickly turned from a graduation to a family reunion. It was incredible. It was incredible. So, and when, uh, when Sergeant Moat just pulled me aside and goes, is Notka getting sworn in? And I said, yeah. And he goes, did someone tell him to wear a uniform? So he's looking at his twin brother over there. And I'm like, that's not him. He's sitting up front. So, yeah. He has service, um, you know, in his family with his twin brother. He's a firefighter at, um, Central Kitsap Fire Department. And now we have a police officer, so the balance is put back in place in the family. So when you go to the academy, um, when you go to the academy, it's, it's within the first forty-eight hours that they explain to you that you are now a team. You're not an individual. You work together. And you are asked to come up with a, a motto for your class. And each class has a number. Twenty-three years ago, in the end of August, when I graduated, I was class five, three, four. And we had a motto and every day when an officer came on deck, somebody would say class and you would go to attention and you would say your motto. And then you would be able to sit down and go to, to work doing whatever you're going to do. And that happens probably anywhere from ten to fifteen times a day during the day. So it gets ingrained in your memory. Mine was class five, three, four, pride, strength, evermore. It's twenty-three years ago and I still remember it. So I'll give you an example. These guys are in class eight, eight, seven. So that's how many classes have gone since I have been at the academy. Um, so we'll, we'll try it one more time. So class eight, eight, seven.
Stand up.
Send us. He's already forgot. It's been since the eleven. Let's try one more time. Let's try one more time. Class eight, eight, seven. Send us.
We'll go.
So send us, we'll go is that class motto. And that's something that they will never forget. They just, they will forget how to do it, but they won't forget the words or what they mean because it's not just a saying that we shout. It's something that we live. So, and these guys have shown that, that they're ready to pick up that badge. It's a heavy badge. I stood here and told you guys this before. It does not come easy. You know, the hardest part is just beginning for these officers. They're in the midst of a, a grueling three to four month period of time where they are are with a training officer, you know, during their class time, during their, their shift time. They do nothing by themselves and they're critique every day. So they are going through it right now. Um, hopefully, probably sometime in November, they'll be, uh, given a patrol car and they can go out and, and do solo patrol. So so at this time, um, like we said, we, we, we did swear them in the day that they, um, that they got hired because they were going to start on shifts. One of them started two days later than the other one, like three or four days later. So I'll bring the mayor up now and this will be the official ceremonial, um, swearing in. So first we'll have Officer Kobe Hoila. If you want to step forward.
Chief, can you give me a beer? Oh, give you the mic. Hold the mic for you because you have to raise your right hand.
I state your name.
I, Kobe Hoila.
Have been duly appointed to the office of police officer of the City of Snoqualmie, Washington.
Have been duly appointed to the office of, of, office of police officer of the City of Snoqualmie, Wash.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of my office as prescribed by law to the best of my ability.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of my office, office as prescribed by the law to the best of my ability.
And that I will support and maintain the ordinances of the City of Snoqualmie.
And that I will support and maintain the ordinances of the City of Snoqualmie.
And the laws and constitution of the State of Washington and of the United States of America.
And the laws and the constitution of the State of Washington and the State, and the United States of America.
Excellent. Congratulations.
After he signs, we will have Captain Horace come up and pin his badge. And next we will have Officer Notka.
So I state your name.
I, William Notka.
Have been duly appointed to the office of the police officer of the city of Snoqualmie, Washington.
Having been duly appointed to the office of police officer of the city of Snoqualmie, Washington.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of my office as prescribed by law and to the best of my ability.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the dues of my office as prescribed by law, the best of my ability.
That I will support and maintain the ordinances of the city of Snoqualmie.
And that I will support and maintain the ordinances of the city of Snoqualmie.
And the laws and constitution of the state of Washington and of the United States of America.
And the laws and constitution of the state of Washington and of the United States of America.
Congratulations.
As soon as he signs his oath of offices, it will be his father that will come up and pin his badge for him.
Right. So next we're going to move on to a presentation. And so I, you may be really interested in it, and we have a long agenda, so you're welcome to stay or you're welcome to to leave. So um the next item is EV curbside charging from Puget Sound Energy. I'll give you a minute, though.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, thank you. Right. So one second. So our next presentation is um EV curbside charging from Puget Sound Energy. And I'll have our Public Works Project Engineer Hind Ahmed. Do you want to introduce?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmember. Today we're presenting B G Sound Energy Initiative to install EV curbside chargers in the city of Snoqualmie. The B S E team is here to provide comprehensive details on the project. I'll just give a little background. The initiative began uh last year when B S E approached the city uh with the proposal to install uh to install EV chargers on the pre-existing B S E poles around the city. Our staff has has responded uh to this survey and we have showed uh interest on the initiative. Uh this initiative not only provide our citizens with alternative charging solution, but also aligns with our comprehensive plan to encourage more electric electric vehicle use. It's important also to note that this is, this project is fully managed and funded by B S E. The chargers will be owned and maintained by B S E. Our city staff will only be kept informed throughout the process, and the city will also have the opportunity to provide input on the location of the chargers. And I'll hand it over to Kate, uh to Matt, okay.
Welcome, Matt Larson, who's at P S C Government Affairs and previous mayor as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh Mayor and Council, good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. Uh I'm joined here tonight virtually by a few of my colleagues from P S C. Our intent, I know some of you have been briefed at the Public Works Committee uh level, but it's our intent to come before the entire council tonight to give more background on the presentation on the uh curbside or pole pole charging program and answer any questions and concerns you have. And with your support or a thumbs up, we will then proceed on to further community engagement to see how to employ that within the community. So with that, I'd like to introduce Kate, uh Kate Cartering. Kate is one of our community projects managers uh in the uh customer renewables area. She's our primary focus of late, has been implementing, working with communities to implement a suite of our EV charging programs throughout the area. Kate will quickly introduce some of the other members of her team, and then again, we'll bring it up for questions, the answers after the presentation. So Kate, go ahead and take it.
All right. Thanks so much, Matt. Um I hope everyone can see my screen okay. Um as Matt said, I'm Kate Hartering. I'm a Community Projects Manager on P S C's Customer Clean Energy Solutions Team. Um so I've served as the main point of contact with city staff as we've begun conversations about this program. Um and I've brought my colleague Carrie with me, so I'll shoot it over to her to introduce herself.
Good evening. I am Carrie McNeil, and I am the Program Manager for Public Charging for Puget Sound Energy.
All right. So just to give a quick agenda, this will be a pretty short presentation, um but we'll give a high-level overview of P S C's transportation electrification plan and then a little bit more detail about our pole charging program, which we're here to talk about today. I will go over some of the data and community approach that we've taken in selecting Snoqualmie as a potential partner. And then we'll talk more about the process and kind of where we are um in in growing this program. Uh so I'll pass it back over to Carrie.
Thank you. So a quick overview of our transportation electrification electrification plan. It is a five-year strategic framework for electric vehicles, products and services. And our goals are to advance clean mobility and enable market transformation, address the changing infrastructure gaps, plan for and manage the electric loads, and further energy equity and inclusion. So the concept that we are presenting on tonight is pole charging, and it will bring public electric vehicle chargers to uh drivers without access to private charging. Um you can see on the right side, kind of the typical ground mount installation that you'll see in parking lots and uh near, you know, a target in a safe way. Um they do take up a lot of space and they can be expensive to install. The concept that we are piloting right now is putting the charger on our uh distribution poles. And it is about twelve to fifteen feet high, and the equipment um comes down when the uh customer initiates payment. And so if you see in the picture with the woman on the left, she's actually using the charger. The cord um comes down, they charge, and then once the charging is complete, it retracts back up into the unit. This is an actual picture of um some other utilities that have pioneered this. The elevated um position on the right is what we would be using to keep it kind of out of the way and also to curb the um potential vandalism of the cords. So we use a data-driven approach. Um we have a map here with our um the black dots are our existing poles. The shaded red, yellow and green are the high-to-low scale communities that may be historically underrepresented. And the crosshatched are communities experiencing disproportionate impacts of air pollution for tribal land. The black circles are the poles with streetlights on them. And um if there are any EV charging symbols, those would be existing public uh chargers that are in the area.
So just to talk a little bit about where we are in this process, um so currently we're still all the way on the left in our partner meetings phase. Um so as Hind mentioned, we've had a few meetings with staff about the program as well as any parking codes that could impact this program. Um but and we've also presented to committee. So here, um if the city is happy to move forward, we would then go to community outreach planning. Um so this would be a collaborative process to talk with city staff about ways to leverage any existing communication channels that you might have with residents of Snoqualmie so that we can start together feedback on where residents and EV drivers would actually want to see these chargers installed. Um so it's really important to us that we um only cite these in locations where there is demand and where people want to see them. So we would then have a very collaborative process of executing this community outreach and working really closely with the city on what location feedback we receive. So we would review all of the locations that we see and then talk with you about um which of these sites may work the best um versus which sites might have some planned roadwork, new bike lanes, bus lanes, anything that would make it not a favorable site to develop at this time. Um once we've chosen some sites, then P S E would work with the city um to get this project permitted, but P S E would take care of all of that as well as construction and air connection. So P S E would take care of the cost. And all of this activity, we would just want to partner with the city on getting these approved and any construction logistics. P S E would then maintain all of these chargers, so these would be P S E-owned and operated. And once they're built, we would then want to partner with the city on um any marketing or outreach to make sure that EV drivers in the area now um know that the chargers are there, um partner on any social media or any sort of maybe ribbon-cutting ceremony to celebrate the chargers. And so I know we just said a lot, so if we have time for questions, we're happy to field any.
Also, do you have any questions? Pastor Christensen?
Uh just in terms of outreach, making sure that the general public is aware of these locations going forward. Um would locations be available, for example, on Google Maps or on any other like platforms such that if drivers are trying to look through this, it will automatically pop up, or would they have to download a separate app in order to locate where these would be?
Um great question. So once these chargers are built, they would be findable in Plug Share. Um so any of the existing um apps that EV drivers use to look for chargers, they would be in there. I believe those are kind of community runs. So as soon as people see the chargers, they would then manually add them in. Um and I can also speak to the map that we would use for people to give input on where to cite the chargers. We have developed a map where residents will be able to look at a map of Snoqualmie and kind of drop a pin on where they'd like to put chargers. Um so we've tried to make this as easy as possible.
Hey, these uh EV car owners can also download the P S, P S C Up and Go um car charging app too. Can Kate, that would be, that would be available or have a map of those as well, would they not?
Um yes, I believe so. Matt's another resident, um EV driver, so it's very familiar.
Pastor Benson?
Uh yeah, would the expect, would the expectation be that these spaces near these poles would only be available to drivers of electric vehicles from that point forward?
Yes. Yeah, they would become EV-only stalls.
Yes, and we would paint and we would uh paint the EV uh symbol on them. If there's a curb, we would paint the curb green. And then we would also um install the signage for the R C W.
Pastor Johnson?
How many different types of chargers exist at this point? Uh and is, what what proportion of the EV charging market would this particular type of charger serve?
This would be a level-two charger. Um as to, you know, there's typically the level-two or the DC fast charger um or then the level-one at the home. Um as far as how many manufacturers, that's, I I think, kind of ever-changing as it is a growing industry.
Is level-two the most, I guess, popular run?
Yeah, that's the look. I've got about four or five. I'm an EV driver myself. I've got about four or five uh manufacturers on my, or different vendors on my uh phone. But what my observation has been Blink and ChargePoint were dominating the market for some time, but Blink kind of went through a bankruptcy and a restructuring, but ChargePoint kind of swept in, as you even saw with the city chargers that reported that were originally Blinks and other ChargePoints. ChargePoint is by far the dominant uh one out there. Um I think you'll see the the P S E EV and Go program uh quickly growing over the next few years. And uh Councilor Benson, I also wanted to make a comment about uh Washington State is one of the second-growing ED markets in the nation compared to California, next to California. And so as much as there might be consternation about losing lots to EV cars, the proportion of vehicles will be more EV cars, particularly in a demographic like Snoqualmie. Um you know, that's one of the wealthier demographics where you'll see more EV adoption rates more than others. So there'll be demand for those spaces.
Pastor Christensen?
Uh sorry, I just have one additional question. As um someone who, I guess, is parking and using the slot, assuming they end up leaving their car for a twenty-four-hour limit or things like that, will they be charged additionally? Or how is that monitored such that when people are done utilizing that spot, that they move on and park somewhere else?
Uh we do have an idle fee, so and you know, they're they're definitely told that upfront if they are still connected to the charger and are no longer charging, it would give them like a ten-minute warning to say, you're, you know, your charging session is about to be complete, and they would have the opportunity to move. Um the other way, of course, is that the signage would say, you know, you could potentially be fined. Um but that would be uh more of a deterrent.
Thank you. Mayor Tim Holloway?
So I first want to say, um how many and how fast can you get a beer? So that's my next comment. Um I I appreciate the community outreach. Uh however, uh I worry that the vocal minority or individuals may take this a certain direction and might not have the long view that city administration has. And I also question the jurisdiction on parking spots. Okay, so I do want to make sure that the city administration is involved in the process, that we can have some influence of that may not be an appropriate place for an EV, let's move it over here. I I just want to make sure that engagement goes on. And I'll close again, how many, how soon, let's get going. Make sure that we're doing that long, that long view also, not just individuals wanting an EV in this particular spot, that particular spot. So you got that, you got that look I get as a neighbor quite often. What is?
No, I just wanted to ask for a clarification of the question. Is your concern that P S E engaging, say, a a spot near a multifamily housing complex, they might be pushed back in that certain area, but the city's position might be, no, we see in the long term, there's a benefit to having it there. And so you'd want the city or administration's voice to maybe push back on that a little bit. Is that, I just want to understand what I'm hearing you say.
And I'm not sure. I just want some influence. You may have individuals saying, you know, you uh loading up saying, I want it close to my house, where we say, well, you know, none of your neighbors have it, and it's probably better positioned over here. It could go either way. And we may have some spots that are where individuals will say, yes, I love it here, but we have plans to do something in that area which would take that parking spot out later. The long view of whatever our downtown rehabilitation plan or whatever else is. So I just want, I want the city staff engaged in that process in helping determine not only that long view, but maybe the the consolidated view versus individual views you'll get from the web survey and everything else.
All right, Kate, I'll let you to take that question. I just wanted to try and get some clarification on it. So you clearly understood what the question is.
Yeah, absolutely. And and we hear you. So we're we're going to make sure that the, after the community outreach process, we're then reviewing all of that site feedback very closely with city staff um for exactly the reason that you mentioned, to make sure that there aren't any future plans going on um next to or connected to the pole that we would want to use or anything like that. Um and we expect, or we hope from what we've seen with other cities that we're working with um that once we get all of the data from the maps, we're able to kind of see trends in where several different people wanted to put pins. Um although we're we're aware that there there may be some people who just want it near their house, and hopefully we'll be able to kind of tell who is voting that way.
And as for the uh timeline, once our community engagement is complete, um we're looking at probably about eight months from site selection to installation. And we would be looking at starting with two or three chargers and then, you know, kind of prioritizing the locations. And then maybe in year two, we put two more in, you know, we can build as the need grows.
So Pastor Watson and then Pastor Christensen?
I'm not an EV voter. However, this project is connected to poles and poles. However, this project is connected to poles and poles are primarily downtown, not on the ridge. And I guess my question is, how do we have equity when 80% of the population lives on the ridge? And 80% of the poles are downtown or something like that.
Yeah, I think that's definitely something we'll be looking at. So if, if, you know, it looks like all of the polls as well as a lot of the feedback is concentrated downtown, we would then want to have conversations with staff of, you know, what are the demographics of this area? Are there any areas that weren't mentioned that we still want to be able to look at? And of course, where, where are their poles is kind of the first way we have to narrow it down. So these are exactly the kind of things that we want to talk about in the community engagement planning process.
So Councilor Watson, part of the rationale driving the equity issue is not just on how you equally spread charging stations around, but how you equally give access to those of whether they're high income and have the means or those that don't have the means. And you want those of lower means to have access to the, you know, sort of the EV future electrification if they want to transfer with heat pump. So even from UTC state guidelines and rules and regulations, as well as some of the values that the PSE programs is emphasizing, trying to create rebates in other programs and incentivize and create equity for those in lower income levels. And in Snoqualmie, that disparity has been more that the demographic in the historic area downtown has been more of that demographic that, you know, because you could use those benefits more when you're going to find multifamily houses in the commercial sectors. We, and we do realize that there is the challenge with the lack of poles up on the ridge. For that reason, it does lend itself to that in this demographic downtown.
So Councilor Christensen and Councilor Johnson?
One of the recommendations I have as well as we're doing community outreach is ensuring that we have the local businesses that are signing on and having the opportunity to share. Because not only are we looking, if we go forward with this, at having charging stations for our residents, we'd also like to have, or at least it would be nice to have the opportunity for visitors coming here who are going to charge and then patronize our small businesses, right? Both in downtown and up on the ridge. One of the other comments I was going to say is that it, at least from my perspective, I think it would be really helpful to have it, especially for the multifamily homes. Because for example, I do own electric vehicles, we have two. And we're able to run them pretty easily from the existing outlets at our house. However, I have friends who live in the apartments and it's much more difficult to get their car charged, right? So I think those are the two things at least that I would raise. And then I did have another question. I recall receiving some correspondence a while back about King County libraries doing some kind of a charging as well as this, I'm assuming this is completely separate from libraries potential program for charging?
Yeah, that would be separate from this particular program. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, but I really appreciate your recommendation about businesses. That's absolutely something that we'll want to incorporate into the planning process is how to reach those businesses specifically where the concentration of poles are.
Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, so going back to the poles being downtown, I thought that I heard in the original presentation that they could also be on light poles, not just on electricity, power line, high tension line poles, whatever that is. But there are lots of light poles up on the ridge. So if they could be connected to those, then that works.
Yeah, but if they are PSE owned light poles, that is one of the, there's a little more cost to that because the light poles typically are not engineered to hold any additional weight. But we do have the ability to change them out for a pole that could hold chargers.
To Councilor Christensen's comments, I did want to circle back to Councilor Johnson's comments too. The, the part of the purpose of the niche, the niche that we don't see in the market, we talked about vendors and where the, you know, who are the providers like ChargePoint out there? We haven't seen, okay, correct me on this, but we haven't seen them as an EV car charger or owner. I haven't seen them getting into that niche in the multifamily serving that sector of the
That's right.
So that, that's one of the things I think is exciting about this program is we can get into those neighborhoods, areas where there's multifamily apartments or housing or condominiums and provide charging for that sector of the community that wants to take in EV cars.
Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, then I've got a few more things there. Actually, when I was envisioning this, I wasn't even thinking about residential use. I was actually thinking about it as a commercial thing that, you know, we've got all these spaces for patrons who patronize downtown and they park for half an hour, go and spend their money here and then come back and their car is charged up. So that's actually what I was envisioning in the first place is that this could be a help to our businesses. But if it makes sense to have it in a residential zone, then great, sure. Maybe we could do all the above. Following on that, let me do this one first. I, it was probably said and I just missed it, but who pays for the electricity? When you plug it into your car, electricity isn't free. Somebody's got to pay for that. Is this something that PSE is covering? Is this something that would be a build of the city? Is this going to have a place to swipe your debit card? So how does that work?
The customer who is charging the car would be paying and it's a rate based on market rate based and we're, you know, governed by the UTC. And it, all of the construction costs up to that would be PSE and then the customer would be paying the usage fee.
I'm sorry, I just missed that part. Who would be paying the usage?
The customer who's charging the car.
Downloading the PSE Up and Go app on your, on your phone. And you get there and swipe the charger with your phone or with your PSE Up and Go card. And like I said, once the, once the transaction's been active, the charger dropped down, you charge your vehicle. It just shows up on your bill. Some of the, some of the charging, like ChargePoint just says you kind of fill up your, your account 10 bucks at a time. And when it gets to Sam, he'll grab another 10 bucks off the music. And Kate, one of you could clarify the pricing on that. Initially, when many of the chargers were out there, they were like 40 cents a kilowatt hour, which is sort of much higher. And you do the comparative math, it's higher than gas. If you got down more like 20 cents, it was in the range. Some jurisdictions have done that and to Kate's point about the UTC and others, we're trying to get in the market where it's very attractive, but pricing on that as well.
Representative Tim Holloway?
Well, and doing what? One of the beauties of this is that these things are up on a pole. So people wanting to do things other than charge can't get to them. And it's through the app, when you do the app, then it comes down and you can charge, charge your phone, as we were saying. But I do want to reflect back on one thing. Where we may have pins show up in locations where there are not PSE owned poles. Could there be any consideration of other structures or other not PSE poles to do this on? I'm thinking like parking, parking lots up on the ridge. I mean,
Yes.
Do we do that in those parking lots, even though they may be owned by the whoever owns that property?
Yeah, that's a great question. And that's something we thought about when we were designing the map is do we want to kind of limit it to just places where there's an existing PSE pole? We decided to allow folks to put, to drop pins wherever they want. For that reason that you're, you're kind of getting to that we can then utilize other PSE programs or just other kind of avenues to install chargers now that we know that there's a demand there. We could either utilize PSE's other public charging program to maybe work with that property owner to install a different type of charger. Or just encourage them to apply for a grant since there are a lot of other ways to get charging. So we figured it was a helpful way to, to help cities kind of see where the demand is beyond what this particular program can match.
Okay, that's one of those areas where maybe city administration can, where there's a high demand, we can work where either there's city infrastructure or there's private infrastructure that may lend itself to this kind of program and work through that. I think that's the city administration can engage in this process.
Exactly, yeah.
Councilor Johnson?
You guys.
Well, actually, I was going to come along that same line of questioning. Kate, could you come back to Councilor Johnson's question about the use in a commercial or to benefit retail or commercial areas? Because as I recall, this product does lend itself to that as well, does it not?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I think where, where that question kind of led is, you know, hopefully we can do all the above. Maybe we can look at residential areas near multifamily, but we could also look at a more downtown area that's attracting visitors that might be driving EVs.
Councilor Johnson?
Also, the community center might be a good spot. But next thing is about, it's kind of two parts about handicapped accessibility. The first is swipe on a poll and I understand, you know, you push the app thing and it descends. Hopefully it doesn't like literally drop and hit someone on the head. I'd assume it has some sort of control over how fast it drops. But, but you know, how far down does it descend? Is it at a point where someone in a wheelchair could use it? Or would they still have to reach up somehow? And then I'll get to my second handicap thing because it's, it's not exactly related to that.
It is not extremely fast. We have gone out and seen Seattle City Light have some of these that they have installed. And we've gone and actually had a coworker with an EV and watched them in action. And they come, you know, all the way down and then I think it's about 25 feet, you know, so that they would have the ability to reach either side of the car. So it certainly would be accessible.
In other words, it has to come down not only to the ground, but enough to pull it out, plug in the vehicle. So it's definitely well within reach.
So Councilor Johnson?
So it sounds like it, it just fall up on that first. So it sounds like it kind of like unspools essentially all the way, or at least a significant amount of how far it can go. Rather than coming down to a certain height and then you pull it and it continues to pull. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, got it. So then the other part was about the interface between EV charging spaces and handicap spaces. This may sound a little bit niche, but I happen to know of a city, my hometown of San Luis Obispo, California, that has doubled up spaces where they are both EV and handicapped. And one of the issues that could happen is that someone sees, oh, it's a handicap spot. So they pull in and park there and put up their placard and they go, not realizing there's also a charging station. So I'm not sure to what degree we want to have overlap or not, or how those two things interface with each other, but it's just something to think about.
Yeah, that's, that's a great point. And when we're doing the site selection, we'll, we'll take that into consideration also.
Councilor Benson?
I think any handicap space is available to any handicap driver. That's, that's, I believe the law.
One would think.
Yeah, yeah. Any, any handicap, any handicap driver can park in any handicap space. Unless there's been a new thing that's come into existence.
One would think that that would be the case.
Anything, any other questions? Sounds like a great program. And so what would be the next step?
Yeah, so the next step, if the city's interested in moving forward, we would just then schedule a community outreach planning meeting where I think we would go into more detail about a lot of the great points raised today about how we want to get the word out to the community and what channels already exist within the city.
That sounds great. Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, and then the last thing is, since there, to my knowledge, there are no universal chargers that fit any electric vehicle. I would hope that we would continue the process of looking for opportunities for EV chargers for vehicles that these poles wouldn't serve. It's different program, but I just scared of the administration to continue, yeah, with that process.
Councilor Christensen? I was just going to say typically, if you have an EV car, you can purchase a little thing that attaches on and then you could just pop into any of the others.
Yep. Anything else? All right. Well, thank you, representatives from PSE. Appreciate the presentation. And it seems like we have, I think Hind will arrange for what the next steps are. Please keep in contact with her.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilor.
Great. Thank you for having us.
Right. Next item is to provide time for residents to comment on items that are not on the agenda. And no one, no one, no online public comments will be accepted during the meeting. Written comments are encouraged, maybe submitted in person or by mail or write email to cityclerk@snqualmie.com. And before I read through the ground rules, is there anyone within the council chambers that is wishing to do public comment? So please raise your hand. I'm not seeing any at this time, so our public comment period is closed. And now we will move on to the consent agenda, which contains approval of the city council meeting minutes dated July 8th, 2024. Approval of the claims report dated July 22, 2024. Motion, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move second.
Moved by Councilor Watson, second by Representative Tim Holloway. Is there any public comment regarding this item? Not seeing anyone. Is there any discussion, Council? All right, seeing none, all in favor, CI? Any opposed, nay? And the motion passes unanimously and the consent agenda is approved. Next item is Public Safety Committee, AB 24-083, Authorization to Purchase Police Department Vehicle. Councilor Watson, would you please read the introduction and motion?
Yes, the purpose of this agenda bill is to obtain authorization to purchase a replacement vehicle for the police department. Costs will be drawn from money received from the sale of the jail van and money already deposited into the ER and R fund. Council authorization is required as the purchase price exceeds $50,000. And I move to approve the purchase of one police SUV to replace the surplus prisoner van for the police department.
So it moved by Councilor Watson, second by Councilor Christensen, approval of AB 24-083. Before we move on, is there any public comment regarding this item? Seeing none. So we have our Captain Horacey. Would you please maybe give us an overview and he's here to answer any questions?
Council, Mayor. Back in September of last year, we sold and surplus the vehicle that was, didn't really fit our needs anymore. Through transition of the department, we're now at the point where we're ready to start moving forward and get that vehicle back into a rotation for us. And working with Public Works, we sold the vehicle for $35,000. There was approximately $33,000 deposited into the ER and R fund and additional $16,443 is needed on top of that to purchase this vehicle. It's just to replace the, the transport vehicle that is a joint venture purchase with our counterpart that we have a contract with in North End. So we're just wanting to get that fleet back up and get that vehicle moving.
Thank you. Councilor, do you have any questions? Right, seeing none. All in favor, CI?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? And it's unanimous and the authorization to approve to purchase police department vehicle is passed, is approved. Thank you. Is there any further report regarding Public Safety Committee?
There is nothing more tonight. Thank you.
Is there any report regarding Community Development Committee?
Like that, no report.
Is there a report for Parks and Public Works Committee?
No, I don't believe so.
All right. So Finance Administration, we have Resolution 1693 Regarding Approval of the Community Center Expansion Phase One, Including the Addition of an Aditorium or Pool to the Existing Community Center and Construction Upon Full Funding of the Project. Representative Holloway, would you please introduce this item and make a motion?
Move to approve Resolution 1693 Regarding the City of Snoqualmie Phase One, Including Addition of an Aditorium to the Existing Community Center and Construction Upon Full Funding of the Project.
It's been moved by Representative Tim Holloway, second by Councilor Christensen to approve Resolution 1693. I will ask if there's any public comment regarding this. I'm not seeing anyone in the chambers raising their hand. So is there any questions regarding this? See Minister Chambles, do you want to discuss this? We also have the Y, Sir Bianca. Eric Fionki, that's online. If you have any questions regarding this.
Sure, the purposes of this resolution is to make our grant efforts a little more competitive next time and dispel any confusion on, on the intentions of Council from the direction that we have. So it attempts to, to thread that needle between all the discussion we had over the last.
Do you have any questions? Councilor Benson?
I had one question. There was a line in here that the project enjoys support from community partners, including the YMCA of Greater Seattle and this Snoqualmie Valley School District. I, I have seen the support of the YMCA. They've been very vocal partners and very supportive. I'm not, I, I'm, I'm just curious how the school district has supported this.
I would say they have written a letter of support for us each time. And so they just don't have the funding right now to help fund it, but they are supporting. they just don't have the funding right now to help fund it, but they are supporting us moving forward and would provide letters for when we go for the King County Parks Levy and things like that.
So they're not against it.
They're not against it. They're for it. Council Johnson?
I'd just like to add on that, that considering that I think we're in the best spot we've ever been with regard to our needs for funding, we could return to them with a much smaller request than what we've asked for in the past. And perhaps we'll gild further with that. But regardless, to the next point, they
Maybe a longer letter.
There you go. Council Walton?
While I supported the design build, I, for a couple of reasons. One is to have the maximum pricing in place. Two is that we can move this along faster. I think the second step is identifying the funding. And I think we've, we've heard about that. I think that beyond that, there's a couple of points of consternation for me in this. And I'm not opposed to having a pool or the expansion, but I'm very much concerned about putting into this the idea that the Y is going to be the operator of this. And that's that last whereas line. It says the city has an operations agreement with the YMCA. I want to see that bifurcated so that it's an operating agreement exists with the YMCA, but it's not to assume that the YMCA is going to be the operator. And the reason is this. As I look at the Y model, it was based off of originally Snoqualmie and the community center was followed by the city of Snohomish. But we publicly funded the facilities. We come under the YMCA's structure and we have no say when they raise rates. So we can't do that on utilities. We can't do that on water. We can't do that on other utilities. And it's concerning because these are our tax dollars. And my job is make sure that the citizens of this city, that the tax dollars go into, pay for this, are getting the best deal. And I think what we're doing is we're we're handcuffing ourselves. And I'd like to see us shorten this, has had an operating agreement with the YMCA perhaps, but a new agreement, which may or may not be the YMCA. Because as I look at other cities, I pulled this up. YMCA currently is charging a family for a hundred and fifty four dollars a month. Now we get a discount. We get a five percent discount because we don't have a pool. We get a five percent discount because it's city owned. So it's still around a hundred and fifty dollars, but we don't have any control over the rates. The other known factor is pools inherently lose money. They lose a million. They lose a million and a half a year. And so we are giving that risk over to the YMCA. I want to recognize that. But when you look at other publicly funded pools around Snohomish, fifty one dollars a month with the same family of four, Federal Way, seventy five dollars a month, Covington, thirty five dollars a month, Bone Pool in Izakua, fifty dollars a month, Shelton, ninety nine dollars a month, and that's a YMCA operated pool. Bellingham is kind of anomaly. It's a hundred and fifty a month. So my point is this, I think I'm good through most of this. I do have a little bit of concern because I'd like to see the school district chip in some money. I mean, they
Or a longer letter. Long, longer letter. Longer letter.
Maybe. But I'd like to bifurcate this. I do not want to slow this down. I want to move forward, but I want to move forward thoughtfully for the taxpayers, make sure that our citizens are benefiting from this pool. It's for us first. And then if it works out that the YMCA is the best operator, so be it. But I'm, I'm, I'm really concerned about making sure that we give access to as many families regardless of their income. And that's, that's my one concern. So at this point, unless that's changed, I'd have to vote no.
We should, um, so Council Cotton, then Christensen and Benson.
I will hardly agree with the points that Councilmember Walton has brought up. I think that's one of the biggest concerns that I've heard from our constituents as far as public funding. And then on top of that, the fees that they're having to pay to be able to access the, the, the pool, the community center and such. And so that, I think that's also kind of a bone of contention with, with many of our, of many of our taxpayers. And I would like to see that be addressed as well.
Pastor Christensen?
Yeah, I can certainly understand Councilwoman Walton's concerns. I do want to, I guess, raise some questions I had in terms of the price points that were given and also remind council that the Y isn't just operating a pool, right? They provide and because the city does not have its own human services division, they are supported along with some of the other nonprofits because they do, for example, offer events for teens. They offer programming for kids. They offer, you know, their shower program, which provides two thousand showers a year for our low income folks who otherwise may not be able to bathe as they go to work, right? So it's not just the pool. The YMCA does a lot of other community events and things like that. And about additional information on the other pools that you provided, it's hard to know whether we're really comparing apples and oranges there. And also, just again, I know it's been brought up a number of times. The Y does offer daily drop-ins. They do provide scholarships so that, you know, if your family doesn't have enough funds to be able to go, there will still be a way for you to access those facilities, whether it's for the workouts, the showers or any event that we go for with the pool there. I do understand the concern about not being able to necessarily weigh in on the amount that they charge, but they are essentially being left, left on the hook to make sure that the pool runs, that the facility runs. And as certain things break down, they're responsible for the upkeep in our facility, right? Which is otherwise something that we would be taking in-house and would be hitting our operations budget. So I would just kind of caution those statements there.
Council Benson, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, you know that they provide a huge benefit for our community.
Yeah, I think, I think it's also important to note that when operation of that facility takes a loss in a year, they don't come to us asking for us to cover that loss. And we've had a few, a few bad years where everybody's taken a loss, including the Y. And we haven't gotten a bill from the Y to, to, to close the delta. I, I met with Mr. Sutton. I know that they're actively working to come up with ways to better serve the community that is not members of the Y as well. They are, they are looking for as many opportunities as they can to provide opportunities for non-members to use the pool, non-member residents to use the pool even without charge on, at certain times. And I know that he's, that they're actively working on trying to expand those benefits as well. But from an operational standpoint, I'm, I'm kind of more comfortable with that idea because we don't get presented with a bill at the end of the year if it's a tough year.
Mayor Protim Holloway?
All right. So I've been concerned through this, that this resolution doesn't really match up with what we agreed as a statement on the CIP. In this particular case, let me reflect that the Y has been, has been a great partner to work with. We wouldn't have been, we wouldn't be here without them at this stage. And that if you were to change the structure, I mean, you're looking at about two point five million dollars of capital funding and about a million dollars for the equipment and whatever. I don't see anybody coming to the table getting through that pool first to reply. So I'm not sure there's another one on the horizon. I don't know. Okay. But regardless, who the partner is for operating the Y is related to, but I don't consider it as germane to the CIP. When we go for grants, we can bring that, bring that issue up that we have a partner we're working for. But we say other funding. We don't say the Y in the CIP, I believe. So I, I move at this stage, just for clarity, to strike this whereas the city has an operating agreement. I move to strike that from the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Protim Holloway, second by Council Walton to strike. Get that up so we can take a look.
That last whereas.
Right there. They have operations agreement with the YMCA will negotiate a new agreement to operate the facility and cover future maintenance operations and capital maintenance costs.
All true statements, but not germane to the CIP in itself.
And the board. Just to be group
Oh, you language people. Okay, fine.
So Council Johnson and then Council Christensen?
Two quick things. First of all, I believe that a large reason to have this resolution as at all was such that the Y could go to their donors and say, hey, look, the city's really serious about this. And by taking them off, that could make it harder for them to do that. It might undermine some of the purpose of the resolution. So there's that. Secondly, I thought that on the worksheet, as my understanding is we're supposed to call that, the one pager that under the sources, that the that the Y's contributions were listed in there. So I wonder if we could pull that up. I wasn't able to find it on me, but do we have the worksheet available?
Finance Director Drew Bootey can find it for us.
All council approved was the statement of sources, uses and fund balances. So that large eleven by seventeen size sheet, CIP worksheet hasn't been updated yet to reflect that option number one that was selected by council at that time.
Oh, Pastor Christensen?
So it was my understanding is we went forward with the resolution and similarly Councilmember Johnson's, but it was not just the donors that the YMCA was hoping to approach. It was the fact that they've already submitted a grant that's currently pending. And I think it's for one point one, one point two million dollars. This is the grant for which they've been successful, I think, every single year that they've applied, like eleven times or something similar to that. And this document was hopefully going to help be supportive with that and then also for legislators as well. And I know that the Y is on, so I just, while I understand the concerns about verbiage and things like that for us going forward, I do want to make sure that as we're going forward, since the intent is, I understood it to be partly for this document is making sure that we're in the best position to get the additional funding, that if we remove that language, that it will not have a negative effect on their ability for the grant funding that they've applied for.
City Administrator Champus?
Just like to remind council that we are in discussions with the YMCA about a new operating agreement. And we have not brought it forward to council for approval yet because it's not ready to bring forward to council for approval. So we, all this feedback is great. It's great for us. It's great for the Y. And we are, we are trying to negotiate points that address all these items.
I think Mr. Johnson was
Council Johnson and then Council Benson.
I thought we, we heard that there was someone from the Y who was online who could maybe speak to this if, if they think that this resolution would be weakened from their perspective for getting that grant that they applied for as well as getting donations. If the references to the Y were removed, if that would hinder their their plan.
And we do have two persons on from the Y. And and Benash? And you're in charge of capital campaigns, is that correct?
That is correct. I'm Anne Bonnick. I service as Vice President of philanthropy for the Y. As an update, yes, we are moving forward with the YRF grant. In fact, we were contacted this morning by the Department of Commerce and have been invited to do an interview for that grant process next Wednesday, the thirty first, which is the last thing before final ranking. One of the things that we were clear about in the application is that we were a partner with the city of Snoqualmie and operated under the operating agreement talked about. And so the fact that in this, in your motion, it talks about a continued operating agreement puts us in a stronger position. Obviously, if we cannot negotiate an agreement to move forward, that will happen. But if, you know, it will weaken the position of the Y if that is taken out at this point before the interview process.
Thank you. Council Benson?
Yeah, I, I understand Councilman Holloway's point that it may not be entirely germane to our purposes for this document to have it in there. But I know that in my opinion, this project as it stands can't happen if we don't have the Y as an operator. That's, that's the sense that I get. Could a pool exist where the Y isn't operating it? Absolutely. But we're not in the position to do that at this point. At this point, all of our negotiations have been predicated on the idea that the YMCA would operate this. And if we're on the, on, on the hook for operating expenses for this facility, that's a whole other kettle of fish that we're going to have to pay for. It's not cheap fish. This isn't like whitefish. This is, this is, I don't know, I don't know fish, but it's a fancy fish. It's like a big game fish. The Y does not come to us to cover their operating expenses when they have a bad year. And pools are expensive. So my sense is that if we, if we want to give this a fair shot of, of working to pull that, that part of the, of the resolution at this point, I think would, would really put them behind an eight ball that just isn't, isn't really fair when they're, when they're in their final push to secure more funding for this project. So I would be opposed to taking it out for that reason. Because, you know, if we're going to give this the best shot of, of working, let's, let's give it the best shot of working.
Finance Director, did you have a comment?
Well, so I was just gonna add a few points. So we kind of talked about, right, the rates with YMCA as part. If you were to go take a look at the Snohomish facility, for example, certain of their rates are a little bit. But one of the things that isn't addressed in the rates is necessarily the taxes that the school district is generating that it has to give over to the pool in order to sustain the facility over time. So there are different funding models in play, right? Overall, we have gone down one road, right, for the most part. But there are other, certainly other funding models that may include rates as, you know, percentage of the total cost. But then also you're having to back fund some of that through the taxes that you're collecting overall. And that's what you tend to see with other agencies out there or municipalities, but that they're going to have to allocate percentage of the property tax revenue in order to support the ongoing operations of the facility. So we've chosen one direction in the past for the most part. And that's kind of what this proposal that we've demonstrated so far has been retaining.
Thank you. And I would say, I think last time, last meeting we had, the Y did mention that since COVID, they've covered pretty much almost a million dollars in loss for our, our Y. So, you know, that's, they cannot necessarily sustain that type of loss ongoing. So we need to have this expansion and an auditorium in order to draw in more members and reduce those losses. So and they are covering the maintenance operations and capital maintenance for next thirty or forty years if we sign an agreement with them. So we have a motion on the table which was to remove that particular line regarding operations agreement with the Y striking it from the resolutions. So Council Walton?
So based on the discussion, it helps
So based on the discussion, it helps to give a little more context to this. However, I, I, I think we can meet somewhere in the middle where we're not giving up our ability to make sure that this is an affordable, accessible um, facility for as many of our residents as possible. I, I do realize that, um, you know, those that, that participate get preference as far as swim lessons, I believe. They get preference as far as, and, and please correct me if I'm wrong. They get preference in, in being able to access the programs, but it, it's, there's no guarantee necessarily about, um, uh, those that don't have the means to pay the dues. Um, and, and having the same access while members of the YMCA from all over Seattle will come here and they will enjoy the pool that is our taxpayer funding that makes that happen. So I guess where I'm at is, you know, i- if we leave the verbiage in there, I would like to see a modification that we will continue negotiating a new agreement, not assuming that we are in the process of a negotiated agreement to make sure that we include as many of the kids and family as possible. It says, we'll negotiate. I, 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 I just find it to be, the way it's written right now is it's a foregone conclusion that the Y is our only option. And I think there, you know, we, 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 we owe it to the community at large to give the best deal possible. And it does concern me that we don't have any say over the rates. Once it's said, it's said. And it's, we don't have any say over the rates in the future, what the increase can be, whether it's capped or not. And, uh, we, we don't have say over the local management of it. I mean, those are all concerns. I think that through this negotiation, but I'd like to see it either be stronger, more favorable to the city or have a little more influence that we have over this process. I, I feel like it's a foregone conclusion that whatever the Y says, we are going to take. So maybe I'm wrong.
Council Johnson, Council Benson.
Um, yeah, it looks like some of the verbiage was just changed, uh, up on the screen um, to, and are negotiating. I'll be curious to hear if that would work. Though technically I'm concerned it's not technically what the motion is on the table if for procedural.
We need a.
Um. I'm just gonna leave it at that. I had something else. It will come back to me.
Point, point of order to my own point.
Okay.
Is, is the, the motion and the mover and the second could withdraw the motion and make a new motion to some sort of more favorable terms.
That is true.
But, but that's.
Or you could.
Person moving it.
Or make a motion to clarify or add additional words. Oh, I see. You're, you're talking about moving it. Mayor Tim Holloway, then.
Move through with concurrence of the second, move to remove the motion.
And who was, who was second? Okay. So that motion has been removed. So that strikes that. So that clause would stay in there. Council Benson.
Uh, yeah, I was just gonna make the point that I think the YMCA really needs to do a better job of making it clear uh, the amount of, of costs they have taken on over the last few years, uh, uh, subsidizing the Snoqualmie YMCA. I think it would go a long way with people who are, are, are bristling a bit to the YMCA, uh, being the operators of this, uh, facility. If, if they, if they, uh, really advertised how, how, how much they have lost in the last several years sustaining this YMCA. Um, I think it's also important to recognize that they also have a very heavy line item of, uh, subsidized memberships and, uh, usage where they've also, uh, given all, given a lot to folks who aren't in a position. Uh, Council, Councilmember Christensen noted the shower program and, and, uh, programs of, of that sort that have benefited a lot. Um, so I think it, I think it's, uh, uh, do other operator, pool operators exist? I, I'm sure they do, but I think that, um, I think that, uh, the YMCA does have a track record of serving the city. And, uh, I think they should do a better job of letting us know what that is. They're not going to break their arms, patting themselves on the back. They're, what they've done is worthy of note. And so, uh, I hope that they will, will share that uh, with the, with the citizens better so that we can see that they are worthy partners.
Good point. Um, Council Johnson.
Uh, given that I don't believe that the verbiage on screen right now is currently the motion, move to change the verbiage as it appears on screen.
Second.
So move by Council Johnson, second by Council Walton to use the verbiage that is on the screen as it appears.
To, to clarify, I, I could read, I could read the change if you want.
Sure.
Okay. Uh, to make the change from, uh, whereas the city has an operations agreement with the YMCA and will negotiate a new agreement to make it whereas the city has an operations agreement with the YMCA and are negotiating, negotiating a new agreement, et cetera.
One more change up there.
Oh, there is.
Right. To preserve.
To preserve the community access.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Uh, to preserve community access.
Council Cotton.
I'd also like to see it. Could it insert it into that last statement that something to the effect of to preserve and promote our community access or promote community access. Um, because I think that's, as Councilmember Walton was saying, something that we really need to make sure that we're getting our community the access that they need. Whether being members or not.
Some motion. Can I make a motion?
I, before, before we made a motion, I was just wanting to see if we could change, but if, if, if people think that that's.
We have a motion on the table. So it's to include, then to add the word promote.
Seconded.
Okay, so it's moved by.
I wanted to stop that. I was wondering if I could just, uh, is it a thing for me? I'm sorry. Point of order.
Okay, what is, say your point.
Thank you. Um, I don't even know if this is a proper point of order, but anyway, uh, is it a thing for me to change my motion to that with concurrence of a second, or do we have to have a second motion on top?
Second.
You know, probably change your motion with, with that.
An okay thing to do. It would save us a baby dinosaur.
The second occurrence, it's just a little, it's like a.
Okay.
So the same, okay.
Okay, perfect. Then, uh, I'll do that with concurrence of the second.
And this, very great. Okay, so we still, so we have changed it.
Seconded.
So it says preserve and promote community access and operate the full, the facility and cover future maintenance operations, capital maintenance. Okay. And I will state, I have the statistics that they, that the Y showed, but majority, more than majority of the seniors that attend, their medic, Medicare pays for it. So the seniors attend for free. Yes, the silver sneakers program, actually. So, yes. Okay. Any other comments? All right. So this is the motions on the table is changing this clause. Um, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. Any opposed nay? Great. So that clause passes. And so going back to the overall resolution. Any further discussion on the overall resolution? So all in favor, say aye.
I, I just wanted to say.
You mean all the vote?
I do want to say one thing. I, 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 considering the amount that the YMCA has put into this, I do have a bit of a problem that they are sharing that line with, uh, the Snoqualmie Valley School District who wrote a letter. That bothers me. So I would move to, I would move to separate that into another line so that it is not conflated with the support that the YMCA has given to this project.
I'm looking for it.
So it's the second whereas, but also having them both on the same line also helps to sell the point when they are talking to the state for the YRF grant into that King County aquatics and all.
I think it's insulting to the YMCA, but, um, if, uh, if the council believes that this is the best chance for success, I'll withdraw my motion. Uh, but.
Was that a motion?
There was no second.
There's no seconds. It dies, dies for lack of a second. Council Johnson.
Yeah, I, I definitely hear the, uh, the concern and, uh, I, uh, have been reaching out to our, uh, local electeds and, um, with the current state that the project is in, um, I, I think that those, um, those, um, conversations are starting to make some progress. And I'd encourage my fellow council members to do the same. And, uh, that goes for the Snoqualmie Valley School District as well. Say, hey, we're really close. We're a stone's throw away. Oh, you know, we don't need a huge amount to get there. We can make a much, a much, much smaller ask, uh, to the school district now than, uh, what we had in the past because of where we are.
Okay. Any further comments or discussion? Thanks. Rep. Tim Holloway.
Just for my own sake, I guess. Um, I do think this goes a bit far afield from what we said. Um, and, uh, not to mention organizations working in the past, I'll use a fictitious one. If the Dog and Cat Club of Greater Seattle were to come by with seven million dollars and offer to operate this, I'd go. Okay, uh, I don't see that happening. So I think we will continue with the Y.
Uh, filters.
Hmm.
We need better filters.
For the Dog and Cat Club, we, we need better filters, yes. Um, okay, so I just, I'm stating it upfront because if something weird happens, I, again, I've been in a position where, oh, you said this in the past when the unusual happens. Okay, uh, I really want this project to move and I'll take every opportunity to do it. Uh, and if that means different partners, that means different partners. Okay, but I'm, I agree, we're close. I want to get there. Uh, but I also want to make sure that we get there with, with those partners, closing that funding gap. And that if certain partners don't want to contribute, then there are things that may be in question that should remain in, in focus here. Okay, but, uh, this is a bit redundant from what we did to the CIP, but the administration feels so happy, I'll grudgingly grumble and so.
All right. Moving to a vote now. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed nay? Great. It's unanimous and resolution sixteen ninety-three passes. So thank you. And thank you for, yeah, sixteen ninety-three. Thank you to the Y participants for joining us. Okay, moving on. Next is AB twenty-four dash zero eight five, Snoqualmie Police Association Collective Bargaining Agreement. Rep. Tim Holloway, would you please read the introduction and motion?
The city recently completed a negotiation with the Snoqualmie Police Association, resulting in collective bargaining agreement, CBA. If approved by council, will last through the end of twenty twenty-six and apply retroactively to January one, twenty twenty-four. Uh, scrolling down. Is there a motion here? Here we are. Move to approve the collective bargaining agreement with Snoqualmie Police Association and authorize the mayor to sign. May have second.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Tim Holloway, second by Council Christensen for AB twenty-four dash zero eight five. Is there a public comment regarding this item? Seeing none. Um, do we have any discussion? Would you like to see further information regarding this?
So, um, myself, police chief, HR manager, Johnson and Drew are here if anybody has any questions about anything.
Amen. So I would just like to say congratulations to the police department and to our, the city staff. They've, um, you know, come up with a great comprehensive, um, collective bargaining agreement. And both sides approached the bargaining table in spirit of collaboration and worked diligently to address all the key issues. And we feel it's a great agreement for all parties and for our community, including Snoqualmie and North Bend. So, nice job. Right. Okay. Council Warren.
Yeah, I, I also want to echo that, uh, the mayor's comments. I, I think it's really important because it gives us, um, some certainty going forward. Hopefully it will help with retention as well because as part of, you know, a fair negotiation, everybody walks away feeling like, you know, their voice was heard, that, that we have, you know, there's, there's value to the work that's being done here in Snoqualmie and our partner city, North Bend. And, and I think that, uh, this is going to be good for all of us. So congratulations. Thank you.
All right. With that, any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed nay? And it's unanimous and the Snoqualmie Police Association Collective Bargaining Agreement is approved. That's excellent. AB twenty-four zero seven seven is the city council chambers audio and video upgrade. Rep. Tim Holloway, would you please read the introduction and motion?
All right. Purpose of the agenda bill is for council to review and approve the audio visual upgrade for city council chambers. And move to approve the contract civic office automation for the contract chambers, audio, video upgrade and authorize the mayor to sign. May have a second.
Second.
The move by Mayor Tim Holloway, second by Council Benson. Is there any public comment regarding this item? Oh, I'm sorry, Walton. Council Walton.
No, it was the second.
Okay, he was the second. Any public comment regarding this item? Seeing none. We do have our IT Director Fletcher La Croix here to introduce this item and answer any questions.
Do a presentation if you have any questions after I can do that or. Or, yeah, okay. Hello, this is my first agenda bill. Thank you, everybody. Uh, I've got Andy Latham online as well for any other technical questions if needed. Uh, so just quick history, twenty twenty-two, the funds are allocated for modernizing the space that we're in right now. Uh, June twenty twenty-three, discussion was held in committee, uh, and feedback was collected. Uh, after that, we got from that was, well, they need a easy and flexible space that can be done for council meetings and staff meetings. And they want, uh, one of the other reasons was, uh, the equipment has aged, the wiring is getting old, as we can hear when we get the buzzing, the buzzing sound. And also one of the things, they want a hybrid friendly space. And that means that you could hold hybrid meetings easier for staff and council. All right. And these, uh, the, we worked with vendor, uh, on the, the solution. Uh, we wanted modern equipment, obviously. So we're going from, if anybody's into this, it's an analog system to a digital system. For those that aren't, don't worry about it. It just means it looks nicer. Uh, and this will be a true hybrid space. It'll be a lot more flexibility. There'll be, uh, your sound system will stay the same, but there'll be new wiring and there'll be, uh, space mics put in similar to that fire station. Those will not be on during the meeting. So they'll only be on for when people select it for their, their own, uh, meetings. I think that was one of the concerns that we heard. And pretty basic, uh, as far as the space goes, we can get it done. I've been told at least the best timing is five days. And so as you saw in the, uh, agenda bill, it was some at the time at the end of September. And, uh, we may have to hold a couple of meetings offsite, but, uh, we'll be working on that with, uh, leadership to make sure it goes smoothly. And, uh, we may have to hold a couple of meetings offsite, but, uh, we'll be working on that with, uh, leadership to make sure it goes smoothly.
That's it. Representative Tim Hallaway?
So I did ask for one thing out of committee.
Yes.
I haven't seen it.
It's, uh, we added a memo, I added a memo to the finance director and the finance director responded. For the, for the sole source.
Is it attached here?
It is, yes. It is.
Okay, and so I'll tell you my second brief. Um, and we've done it twice now tonight. When the agenda changes from what we discussed in FNA. Which is the last time it was in public light. We should motion it here in council. To make those changes again in public light. I was waiting for an e, for an email, guys. So I'll ask you then to explain to me again. Why the sole source to a company that is not currently on the state approved list providing this service?
So part of the reason is, uh, I think I mentioned this in committee. Hold on, I gotta pull up my letter, I wrote quite a lengthy one. So, uh, we found that the vendor was trustworthy for that work. Uh, we have, we currently do business with them, um, and I've worked with them in the past, and I listed that on the notes as well. Um, they've done a lot of large scale projects and a lot of small scale projects as well. We felt they were a trustworthy, uh, person, uh, as far as not going out to bid. Uh, I've worked on a similar project, uh, from what I could tell, there was some bids requested from a company called Avidex. In twenty eighteen, that was the last bid I saw. And there was another bid for J Mark and J Mark never responded. Now, I don't have a paper trail for all this unfortunately, because I, like I said, I just got here a few months ago. And I've asked the questions and people have told me that, yeah, we did all this work. Uh, the other issue is it's such a custom space, there's not a lot of AV companies that'd be interested in doing the project. Um, when I found, when I did the, uh, media center upgrade at Mount Si, uh, they, I got one vendor to respond. And they responded, they gave me a plan, they did all this engineering and design. And then we didn't move forward and then they stopped taking my calls. So there's a lot of front loaded work that a company has to do to customize the space. And so the one concern for me was like, should I move forward and possibly have to pay a design cost with another vendor or with this vendor and then. Find another vendor to do the install.
Council Watten?
Yeah, clarification from legal, what is, what constitutes the small works? Under the RCW? Is it under a hundred and fifty thousand?
The small works definition? Well, it's three hundred thousand, there's also something called the limited works, which is even lower, but.
So that would fall, this would fall under that?
What was the total amount? I'm sorry.
It's seventy-two.
Oh, yeah, if it's, that's, that's below any competitive threshold.
I don't believe they are on a small works roster. There's specific office automation for this specific kind of install.
Yeah, if it's under seventy-five thousand five hundred, um, it's below any state mandated required bidding threshold or competitive solicitation threshold.
Council Johnson?
Uh, the only concern that I have is, is more of kind of a, a procedural thing with how we, um, show the budget impacts on bills in general, and this one is a really good example. In fact, it's almost a poster child. Uh, this makes it sound like we're spending seventy-two-ish thousand dollars out of three point three million. So, uh, if I remember the public, I might be wondering, well, why aren't we getting a holodeck? You know? Uh, why are we just doing this? Um, when, in fact, that's, that'd be very misleading to, to have read it that way, when it does say, right there, it says, um. Let's see, uh, about seven million for this and other IT expenditures, but what's another IT expenditure? I mean, a couple of laptops? I mean, that's only a thousand dollars, right? So we've got lots of money for this, why aren't we just, you know, blowing the roof off of this place and doing a major overhaul, make it super cool? Uh, well, these other IT expenditures are very significant expenditures, they're, uh, server related things that are way above my pay grade. Know what all that stuff is? Um, so, uh, for, um, going to the future, perhaps this is more of a discussion for FNA. Um, but I'd like to have maybe a line or something that says, uh, on these agenda bills, um. Of the, um. Of the, uh, amount that's been appropriated that's left, uh, what is anticipated from staff to be coming in the future? From future projects? So that it doesn't look like we've got seventy-two thousand that we're spending, so now we're gonna have, uh, millions of dollars left over in fund balance, when in fact that is not the case. But I think a reasonable person could read these agenda bills and come to that conclusion.
I can give a statement to that, I believe the chambers, uh, had a little bit, uh, biennial budget seven hundred and eight thousand for that project. From the last, uh, budget.
What was it? I'm sorry, mayor.
Yeah, Council John.
Yeah, so, uh, what the council appropriated and, uh, staffer council could correct me if I'm wrong, but what council appropriated specifically was, um. About seven million for, uh. I, I guess in general IT expenditures. Um, and so that's where that large number is coming from, so it could be that within that, there were smaller amounts for different things that, um. Were not directly appropriated, and if it was, then that's what should have been said, it should have said. Because I don't remember off the top of my head what we actually did, but if we appropriated a hundred and eight, uh, a hundred and eighty thousand, whatever it was, uh, then that's what should have been in the agenda bill rather than the seven million. Does that make sense?
Yes, our finance director, Drew stood, stood up, so.
So it does to a degree, right? The seven million dollars is our appropriation for the IT fund. That's what we're legally required to spend within. A hundred eight thousand dollars was planned expenditures during the two year period for the council chambers. Could certainly come back and speak to what we plan to do for each and every separate line item, but we do not want to really get into the weeds as much as possible when it comes to. A lot of the agenda bills that we bring forward, right? For most part, so we set the total appropriation, we're operating within that appropriation, that's what's been demonstrated here, is that we've got certainly enough capacity right now. To accommodate this expense, the hundred seventy-two thousand dollars as we kind of move forward. You're asking for a forecast for each and every agenda bill that we bring forward about where we're gonna end up, where we think we're gonna end up by the end of the year. That's a lot of work that's gonna be shouldered by the budget manager as well as the budget analyst, basically, to do that kind of level of effort. For these budget statements to come forward, we can certainly deliver that level of service, but there will be impacts across the board in different ways.
Council Johnson, did you follow up or?
Only in that I think that this would be better taken care of in FNA because I'm fine with this agenda bill as it is, so I'm, I'm fine to move on and we could just talk about this, maybe in FNA instead, that might be a more appropriate spot.
Okay, Council Watten?
And this is a clearly bracketed item because had it been under fifty thousand, if I'm correct. We wouldn't even be discussing it here because it's already part of the finance policy that we pass. For the city, so it falls between the hundred and eight that we already authorized. And more than fifty thousand that the finance policy says they need to bring this forward. If that makes sense, maybe, maybe just point moving forward is to go back and reference. The finance policy that's in place and the reason why they're bringing an agenda bill forward. But excellent job on this.
Representative Tim Hallaway?
Okay, I'll tell you my, uh, other grumble. Um, when we started the whole conversation about. The council chambers. One of the items was really that. We can't run council meetings without staff sitting in the back of the room, basically facilitating. And that we were gonna upgrade this, this facility such that eventually. They could go home and have an evening, which I desperately miss myself, and do something far more entertaining than listening to us. I see nowhere in here that we, you know, that if you tell me we're gonna expend seventy thousand, but I'm gonna save. Because of staff efficiency here. You get less arguments out of me, but that whole thing is taking a side seat. So I'm really concerned. Uh, your other statement of that you believe this guy, this organization is on the small works project, do you know it?
I said, I believe they are not, and I believe I do know it, I checked our.
Okay, so they are not on the small work project?
No.
And when this first came through last time, there was a, a concern expressed. Uh, maybe not publicly, privately to me, that. The individual, the organization that was on the small works project. Uh, was not engaged with fully. In the last proposal. And that was of concern. So, if you hear, if you hear me in committee, um, I'm really gonna, if you're gonna go off the small works project, I really want to know why. Uh, and I never questioned the, the veracity, honesty, or anything else. I just wanna, I assume they're all honest businesses. And can do the work. Beyond that, I just want to know why we go off the small works project to a separate firm, and I really didn't hear that tonight. Okay, but again, this is seventy thousand dollars, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna grouse. And forewarn you of my behavior in the future. But I'll probably vote yes.
Council Watten?
I, thank you, I, I appreciate your comment on the small works roster, however, I came across this with somebody, another professional that asked me about. The, the small works roster and went out and looked at it, and there's actually more than one that's out there too, so. You know, we, we have to be somewhat careful, I think it comes back to the spirit of the notion is it's a small order. Versus, um, you know, i- is it a reputable company that's been around and, and in this case, yes. And they probably have some equipment already here in the building.
I don't know about this building, they have the fire station.
Okay, there is, one of our facilities at least has used it, so it's a known supplier to the city in the past, so.
Yes.
I, I, I guess I would, you know, kind of, we, we need to be a little bit careful in how we use the small works, um, reference to it is. And I didn't realize that until I did some research on my own, so I just wanted to bring.
I can tell you that I've seen different rosters depending on the organization. Believe it's up to the organization to create their, their roster or to use a roster with an organization.
One follow up is I tried to do a search to find all the small works. Companies that are here in the valley. It doesn't exist, it's not a searchable database either, so just wanted to bring that up as well.
So easy to work with. It's not. Okay, any?
But.
Representative Tim Hallaway?
When we talk small works, it, it's a specific list.
Right.
I, I, let's take the action. Um, to clear that matter up in a later discussion of, when we say small works, what list are we referring to? I believe we are referring to the state's small work list, but take that as a secondary action from the discussion tonight. Just to let us know what that is.
Right. Any other comments? Seeing none? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed name? Alright, we're excited to get some new equipment in here, thank you.
Thanks everyone.
And thank you Andy that's online, he's been spearheading this for a couple of years now, so nice job. Okay, next item is mayor's report. Um, so tomorrow we'll be attending the King County Regional Housing Authority. Meeting tomorrow, and it's an opportunity to meet the new CEO, Dr. Kinnison, and have discussion about reforms and strategies going forward. Um, for this authority. So reclaim, um, they received a portion of their funding through KCRHA. And have provided input, so tomorrow's the chance to have a discussion with other mayors, um. And nonprofits and others that use this housing authority. And they're trying to kind of restructure it and figure out what's gonna be the best model going forward. Uh, reminder that there is a, there is not an August twenty-sixth council meeting. There will be council committee meetings on August nineteenth and twentieth. And the twentieth FNA meeting will actually set the council agenda for the September ninth council meeting. So on September third and fourth. We're not having the council committee meetings, as you recall, we had proved the, our schedule for the biennial budget and we have special workshops that evening. So we will still have meetings, but they will be geared towards our biennial budget. Um, Economic Development Commission, they held a roundtable. I think it was last week and had several local companies, um, come in and gave the commissioners, myself. And staff a chance to learn more about the companies, learn what their concerns are. Um, you know, how is it to do business in Snoqualmie? What, you know, some of the issues were the cost of doing business, um, through like. Garbage and property taxes and, and hiring and, um, affordable housing, traffic and signage, those are all issues that were listed, and so. It was a good discussion and I believe EDC is planning to have more roundtables coming up in the near future as well. So. With that, is there any? Mission or committee liaison reports? Or council liaison? Alright. So we have. We have an executive session tonight, so. It's pursuant to RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero one triple I. With litigation or legal risks of proposed action or current, current practice. That the agency has identified when, um, public discussion, litigation or legal risk is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency. This will last maybe. We'll give it. Ten minutes. I think ten minutes, we'll go, we'll start with ten minutes. Um, and those attending would include our interim city attorney David Lanahan and city minister Mike Chambliss. And we can take a five minute break before we start, and no action is anticipated following conclusion of the executive session. Council adjourned directly from the executive session and not returned to open session, the city clerk. Be informed by of the concluding time, which will be reflected in the meeting minutes. With that, we will have a five minute break. And then we will. Come back for our executive session and end at nine oh five. Thank you.